Military. I want to call to order the September 25th, 2024 Planning Board and Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Blumer?
Here.
Steve Benedetto?
Here.
Whistler?
Here.
Boise?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Okay, the next item of business is to, um, review and approve the minutes of our September 11th meeting, um, before I ask for a motion. Are there any additions or corrections that, uh, any board member has? Okay, um, what were your thoughts about this version versus the word to word?
Much better.
Jeff? Okay, I need a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
I have a motion to, uh, approve in a second. Any other further discussion? During that, a roll call, please.
Gray?
Yeah.
Conley?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yeah.
Boise?
Yes.
Steve Benedetto?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes.
Whistler?
Whistler?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is communications from the board. Do we have a report from the Urban Renewal Agency update? Jeff?
Um, nothing. We haven't, next meeting is in October.
Any questions, Jeff?
Has the Urban Renewal District, um, toured the P. County?
I don't think so. I think they're trying to reschedule. They, when they did have a schedule, I don't think they actually had enough people to do it, so. And I haven't heard of an updated schedule in her plan.
Yeah. Um, when we first did the Urban Renewal discussion and the Planning Board recommended it to the council, there was a really emphasis, uh, driving that was the possibility of affordable housing, workforce housing. And initially, we had some people from St. Louis who expressed an interest. Has that gone away and now it's been replaced by something else? Or is, is affordable workforce housing still in the, in the discussion? Uh, I'm hearing other things. I was wondering if you all had addressed that.
No, it's, it's my understanding that, uh, trying to accommodate or make more affordable housing available is still part of that.
Okay.
Effort. Um, a lot of the dis, some of the discussion has been, um, sort of mixed use kinds of developments where there's commercial on the ground floor and, and apartments of second, on the upper floor. But there's been, I guess, the only, um, only current discussion about affordable housing is the current one that, uh, Dave mentioned last week with-
And currently, that's outside of the Urban Renewal boundary. I don't know what the rest of you feel, but that's what kind of drove us in that discussion. Am I remembering that correctly? And I don't think we should lose sight of that.
No, I don't. I, uh, I think that's the general consensus of the Urban Renewal Agency that-
Yeah.
Trying to accommodate more workforce housing is one of the primary objectives.
Yes, and I'm not hearing that much about it, so.
Well, we haven't really had any proposals come forward. And then the other thing that they decided was to kind of hold off on, on accepting any other, any, any projects until they had at least $300,000 or so in the bank so that if a proposal came forward, there would be sufficient funds to accommodate, accommodate them.
Would it be beneficial to amend the, the borders of the U R D to include a parcel that's now available that was part of the airport on the other side of 78? It's adjacent to, um, U R D. So perhaps that might be one way to help with the affordable housing by including that, that, I think it's five acres.
Yeah, I think, I think that's certainly open for discussion and review, but.
I know we amended it once before because we had, um, half of a property on the north.
Wasn't that before it was adopted though? It was after it was adopted. Was it?
Yeah.
Greg or Kevin, do you know what the process is for amending that boundary? Is that a, a formal process in a public hearing we have to go through and all that, I suppose?
Cause that's on your zoning map, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be the same thing as changing zoning, changing a district.
And does that proposal come from us to initiate that? Or does that come from within the Urban Renewal group?
Uh, I think it would be, it would, I think it'd come from the city and then it gets run through the Planning Board in public hearings.
I just, I just wanted to make sure people understood that we're watching, okay?
Yeah, but yeah, there's, I don't think there's any question what the priority for the board in the current agency is.
Okay.
If there's other rumors out there, that's what they are, is rumors.
Yeah, okay. Sandy, City Council?
City Council, uh, the only thing that kind of pertains to us is, uh, the camping on city-owned land ordinance was amended to remove the restriction on camping on commercially zoned, private, privately owned, commercially zoned land. As the ordinance description was city-owned land. Um, and there are currently no restrictions for camping on any privately owned land.
Right. So question, like in theory, I could have a camper out behind my shop indefinitely, or does it still have to? I thought there was some restrictions as far as that we should leave or not that I want to camp around behind.
I'm just saying, it's commercially zoned land. There used to be a restriction for no longer than two weeks. But that's been removed by taking it out of this ordinance.
Hey, John, can you hear all this?
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna ask you to speak up if, alright, anything else?
We, we passed a lot of, uh, resolutions and ordinancees last night, but none that really concerned me.
Yeah, okay, appreciate that. Any questions, Sandy? County rep, Marie, anything?
Um, I have nothing to report, but Bill Bullock is here, our commissioner. Did, was there anything looking on the, you guys, that we should know about?
We're pretty static, just high volumes that are still being expected to be considered by the end of the year insofar as subdivisions and where they're going to be. Um, those are ways to other business at the end to talk. Al and I had a good conversation this morning, um, regarding on some of those areas where city and county are meeting and the areas to contemplate where there could be the possibility of, uh, more of a joint, um, communication effort between the two planning boards for those areas. And I can talk about that and other business, I know you guys got a lot of other things going on.
Yep, and, and based on our conversation this morning, uh, when I get a chance, um, to talk to Jeremy, I'm gonna ask him to reach out to Forrest Mandeville, the, uh, county, uh, planning director, and have those two have a sit down and discuss some current as well as long-term issues in terms of how the, we should communicate, and then I'll go from there. Maybe there'll be a joint planning board, um, county, city, planning board, um, forum, I guess, would be something, but that'd be down the road after Jeremy and Forrest get together.
And I guess, just, just for the record, absolutely have my blessing.
Thank you. Okay, um, on to, there's no new business, so we'll go to old business and at this point, um, I'll turn the meeting over to Kevin or, or, and Chad, I guess Chad, to, uh, give us, uh, a report, your impressions and where we are on our, uh, downtown master plan.
Alright, thanks, Al. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright, so, last week, we had the focus groups for the downtown plan. I thought they went really well. As with most things in Red Lodge, we had great attendance and participation. Um, we got some good feedback and input. I summarized those and sent them over to Al and Jeff, and Al, did you have a chance to distribute those to everybody?
I did.
Okay, so that just kind of summed up. We haven't had time to dive into it and start looking into it and how it might play into the plan. But, you know, we saw some common themes, things that they want to preserve all three focus groups, like the historic feel of downtown, the walkability. Um, there was a little divergence depending on the perspectives, but there were a lot of common themes too. Um, so from here, our next steps, Jim will start working on incorporating this input into the draft downtown plan and get a final draft to the Planning Board, and then we'll go through a review process similar to what you're doing on the growth policy update right now, and then do a public hearing, and then kick it over to the City Council, um, once you guys are happy with it, and they'll go, I think they do another public hearing there to go through it. Um, Al, I don't want to speak for you, but you kind of mentioned maybe waiting and getting through the growth policy review before you jump into the master plan, timing wise?
Um, I'm not sure. We're kind of doing them in parallel, uh, but if we can get a final draft of, of the, I don't want to say a final draft, the next draft of, of your, uh, downtown master plan sooner rather than later, um, that may help us in the process. Do you have a timeline or timeframe when you think that we might be able to get that document?
Um, Jim and I are shooting for mid-October.
Alright.
And, um, I'll have to just touch base with him and see where he's at and, and see if I can get a more exact date where he thinks he'll be at with it.
Okay, um, any questions of Chad from the Planning Board members that were there or weren't there?
I thought you did a really good job, Chad.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I've gotten some very good, uh, responses and comments and even a couple of emails and texts about how worthwhile it was and they were glad they participated.
Yeah, I'm just always super impressed by Red Lodge and how the public actually shows up and participates and it's great.
Jeff, do you have any questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I thought, thought it was well-run and Chad did a good job facilitating the discussion and, uh, everybody had an opportunity to, to provide their verbal input and that was captured on the sub-charts and I thought.
And we got our steps in. Susan, do you have anything?
I was impressed with how much agreement there was from one focus group to the next.
How much?
About how much agreement there was.
Yeah, did you hear that, Chad?
Yeah, no, there were a lot of common threads that were important between the groups that came up, which is good. That's really good reinforcement of what we need to focus on.
Probably the, the one difference maybe was the, the last one, the community-wide focus group, or there was maybe a little bit more emphasis on the fact that the downtown is also part of the Red Lodge community. It's not just focused on, on, uh,
Right.
Tourism and-
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Chad, is it your idea now to, you, you gave us the, the priorities within each, uh, focus group? Is, is the plan now to combine those together and do a overall ranking or, or not?
Um, no, we were gonna include that information, you know, supporting material along with the surveys, but we're, Jim and I are gonna try and pull out those common threads, you know, like the walkability, the importance of that, of it being the center of the community, the historic feel, um, and then weave those into the master plan and, and help with some of the opportunities and ideas on the long-term vision to help develop action items for the plan.
You saw, um, we shared with you the, um, some of the comments from, uh, John, um,
John Clayton?
John Clayton.
Um, yeah, no, those were excellent and, and I forwarded those on to Jim, so that was great follow-up.
And I think, before I let you go, there was a lot of, of, of comments there that, you know, uniqueness, um, things like unique and, and the culture and, uh, um, those types of things that are hard to define and to put into words. Um, that, I think that'll be challenge, challenging. Um, you know, how, how do we define unique? How do we find, define, um, the feeling of the city and those types of things? Um, so I think some of that language will be diff, we heard a lot of that, but I think it'll be difficult to reduce that to, to words.
Yeah, we got a tall task ahead of us to put this all on paper.
Yeah. Okay, any other comment? We let Chad go. I know you have to pick your son up at a soccer game or something. I don't know.
Football practice, but, uh, yeah, um, I did want to just comment, Al, and remind everybody-
Yeah.
Uh, that Mayor Westwood had set him up on Zoom and they're recorded, and he would be able to direct you to, if anybody wanted to watch the focus groups that wasn't able to attend, they are out there, or they're recorded, they will be out there.
Okay.
Dave, are they out there yet or will they be, or when will they be available?
When I checked today, they are not yet, but she's got it on her list for the first part of tomorrow. So the first thing we need to do is confirm, um, the, the usefulness of the recordings. I think that the short version is, everything that was into a mic will get, everything that was not into a mic won't be gone, but hopefully that's most of it. We'll get that confirmed tomorrow.
And a follow-up for that, should we publish the summary, uh, that you shared with us on the webpage? Cause I've had some questions from the participants wanting to see what that was. I, I have no problem with putting that stuff on, on a webpage. Anybody?
I think that's fine.
I think, I think the most, more information we can put out to the public, especially those that participated, at least they get some feedback in terms of that there's an outcome and results.
Can we do that, Dave?
We absolutely can.
And you have that information? I don't have to send it to you?
Um, I cannot confirm that. I've been busy the last three days, but I, if I don't, I will reach out to you to get it.
Okay, alright, alright. Anything else, Chad?
Um, no, I, unless you have questions for me.
Are we good? Alright, thanks, Chad.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Okay, um, now we're gonna move into the growth policy and, and Jeremy is not with us here tonight, and so, uh, Kevin, we're gonna ask you to, um, take the lead on this, and, um, the plan, as I understand it, is the first thing we're gonna discuss is the, um, proposed initial, uh, land use map that you shared with us, and if we can get through that in the next hour or so, then we'll go back to the document and start it, um, uh, the land use chapter within the document. Is that what your understanding is?
That is correct. I talked to Jeremy yesterday, and so we're basically, the two maps that I believe Greg and Jeremy provided to you, we're gonna start back with them, and once again, just want to quickly reiterate, just for those, I can't tell who's on the room, but this is not a zoning map. We're not zoning anything in the county. Uh, this is strictly future planning, uh, using it as a guiding document. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, that just in case, uh, we are not zoning anybody. So with that being said, um, if I can share my screen.
Are you gonna share the map that Jeremy prepared?
Yeah. Let me know. Can you see that right there? That should be the one that Jeremy provided, so, uh, you can see we added the, what would be the one mile buffer with the red dotted line. I think in the future, once we start really getting it down, we maybe want to get it to mere property lines a little bit more, but this is a great place to start, so. Let me zoom in a little bit more, um, and let's start up here on the north end. Let me see if I can, it was coming. So did everybody have a chance to start beginning to mark up the maps that were given on their proposed, uh, future land uses?
It was really hard to mark it up. It's hard to write on toner.
Um, I'm not sure we marked it up, but I think as you go through it, there's gonna be some questions and comments.
Alright. Not sure. Let me see if I can zoom in a little bit further, just so we can get a little bit more in detail.
If I can interrupt you one more time, um, Bill Bullock is here, who is the county commissioner, and I've shared this map with him, and Bill, if you have some comments as we go through this, please be, feel free to speak up.
Uh, yeah, gladly, and again, I don't want to cut out too much because I know you have a lot to look at, but I guess, and I, again, I had a really good conversation with Al this morning, and going back to it, I don't disagree with it, although it's a very unface, first look, it's pretty aggressive insofar as the perception when that's put in front of the healthy. And I guess I would only offer, you know, I'm thinking about it all day today. So there's areas that are kind of in that friction right now with, I don't know if the contemplation of the city, but the availability for the annexation, when that time comes, you know, specific, pretty much anything on the west bench, Remington area, but then with that too, I go back to some of the conversations that have been up in the last couple of weeks, like the woodlands, just north of town adjacent to City Land and everything like that. I guess focusing on some of those friction areas as part of this map, only a thought, but going in and starting out for some, possibly some of those more collaborative conversations, um, it might be more of a, a, a more acceptable start than the outlay of the whole area as it's put forward right now.
Okay, alright, Kevin, let's go through it, and, and as we go through it, um, you'll get comments from the board and, and if Bill has some comments specifically, we'll, we'll listen to him as well. So go ahead, Kevin.
Alright, perfect. So, uh, one thing that's gonna come up is that when we're cutting up this future land use map, keep in mind that there will be, will consider, you know, non-conforming uses, so don't let that necessarily drive, uh, the decision on what, how the city would like to see these areas if they were annexed in their land use designations, if that makes sense, so. Uh, with that being said, let's start here in this low-density residential area, uh, going out, I, just from my experience driving out there, it does seem like it would fit more of the low-density residential. Uh, I do know that there are a few little commercial, I guess if you count, well, not necessarily commercial, if you count the, uh, um, the old round barn, getting out that way, but, um, what does anybody el, what does everybody else have to say about this area in the green here? Is there, is there a cutoff of where you'd like to see it be residential versus anything else? Uh, maybe commercial closer to the actual edge of the city limits? This is where we kind of gotta collaborate a little bit on what you guys would think, so.
Jeff, you want to comment first?
Well, yeah, I, I just looked at the map and, uh, I guess where I kind of started, started at was looking at where, which development was adjacent to the current city boundary or city limits, and, uh, so that was one criteria I was looking at. The other was trying to fit it, fit it to the terrain. So in that particular area, you know, that, I guess I would think about making the break or bringing that red line into where the break and the slope is, um, and then that would capture the residential areas that are within the valley bottom there. I guess that's just-
You're talking about the dotted red line?
Yeah, the dotted.
So you move it a little bit west?
Well, I would just, I was just thinking in terms of looking at it from how the terrain lays and where is, where the future development is likely to occur and where the existing development is outside the city, so, um, yeah, I guess it would kind of, kind of suck it into where the, either along the, somewhere along the county road there or at the break in the, or the bench breaks, rather than just go out one mile. Um, I guess that's kind of the way I was looking at it. It was just kind of not having just these, this kind of squared off straight line, but, but looking at it from the standpoint of where the, where the existing development is and, and what, what's the likelihood of those areas being annexed in the future, um, because of their adjacency to, to the existing cert, um, city, city boundary. So that's-
Any comments on Jeff's suggestion?
Yeah, so, so, um, I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, Jeff. So, in other words, instead of having just a one-mile buffer line determine that green area on the whole, draw it along the lines where the terrain is, where the bench actually sits, and anything outside of that would be more like-
Open spaces?
Unlikely. Yeah, open space ag, and anything in, inside of that would, would be your low-density or your-
Is that your idea that on the other side of that line would be open space then?
Yeah, or a, or just, or mostly it looks like just looking on the aerial photo, it's primarily agricultural, so it would remain-
So you'd move the blue up farther north then, right?
Well, I would, I guess, I would kind of bring it-
The blue's not a bad.
Kind of follow that, this, this frame and the bench.
But Two Mile Bridge Road, all the ones on the east side of that are like 20-acre parcels, and they truly are low-density. And yes, they start out flat and then they rise up to the top of the bench. I don't have any problem including them in this because the homes aren't on the bench, they're down on the flat, so they're closer to Two Mile Bridge Road. So I don't have any problem with the, the red line that goes from the blue and straight north at all. And I see that along, um, Highway 212 on the east is included in low-density and, and that makes sense. Um, even when you go way down towards the blue where you can see the sewer pun,
Yeah.
Um, obviously the woodlands on Rock Creek, all those little, little half-acre ones. And those are duplexes, so is that considered low-density?
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't, I guess I just wasn't even thinking about how the land use designation was. I was just looking at it in terms of adjusting, adjusting the boundary and then talk about land use maybe secondary. That's kind of the way I was looking at it.
Yeah, so other than, actually the way he's got it drawn up makes sense to me.
Marie?
I, I'd like you to reiterate, first of all, what is the purpose of this? And if, I know you talked about it the last meeting, but what is, because it's gonna be a huge misconception, like, like my home property is there and I live out of town for a reason, and I'm just wondering, can you reiterate what you had explained?
Yeah, so we, we have to set up a future land use, land use map based on a one-mile buffer, and it's, what it does is, it's gonna guide the city in making land use designations as properties eventually get annexed. So there is a good chance that a lot of these will never get annexed, but it's, it's progressive planning, thinking ahead about, so when it does happen, there's already an idea of what you're gonna see, so. It could eliminate the fact, and this is, uh, this example's probably not the, the best, but it could eliminate the fact of somebody trying to, uh, annex in a property, maybe for a heavy industrial use and it's right behind, uh, you know, low-density residential. So it kind of, it's like, it's just progressive planning for the city, saying this is what we'd like to see in the event it gets annexed.
Well, before it is annexed and you're talking about progressive planning, what, does this expand the city's power in planning outside? Is there any, is there any teeth to this, really?
Only in the annexation process, cause the- Only in the annexation process, cuz the city of Red Lodge doesn't have any extraterritorial zoning. So extraterritorial zoning would be, it actually is zoned out a mile, but that's not the case here. So there's no, no teeth in terms of what can be developed necessarily out in the county. But there is certain subdivisions within that mile have to be sent to the city and the city gets the, to give their, uh. Their comments on that. So that's where the land use compatibility aspect comes into play.
But there's no statute or the, the city, the, the city holds no real power in this?
Not necessarily, just mainly cuz the, the private. Oh, go ahead.
Well, it's like if I wanna build a shop garage in, at my house, another building. And I'm within this one mile. What, what is the purpose of, what, what would I need to do? Is this extra red tape where I have to go to the city and get their blessing? To build in the county?
No. So not unless it was a subdivision. Now, if you were gonna do a major subdivision or minor subdivision, then it has to get sent to the city for comment.
Okay, so I'm in a subdivision that's already existing way before any of this. So what does that mean?
So it'd be, it'd be the same thing that you kinda just described. If you wanted to build a garage, you'd just have to go through whatever the county requires. Now, if you had a giant hundred and forty acre parcel right on the edge or you're in that one mile buffer. Then you wanna subdivide it, that has to get sent to the city. So then the city can review it based off the future land use map and make a determination. Uh, whether or not they would kind of accept the subdivision based on the land use compatibility.
So it is expanding the city's powers?
But it's yes and no, I suppose. Uh, no is in for private development right now, the city can't really do anything. But if future annexation properties, they can have an idea of what they would like to see.
And it's my understanding that we have to have this as part of the growth policy?
We do, yeah. It's part of the, the state statute. So that's also kind of the kicker, but it is, uh, it's definitely good to have. And it will help alleviate a lot of issues in, in times of annexation.
So I'm just looking for clarity here. I'm in the Cree Tail subdivision, which is within this one mile radius. So if I wanted to build another structure, not only would I have to go to the counting, county planning board. But I'd have to go to the city's planning board to get their blessing also, even though I'm not within the city limits. Am I, am I understanding that right? Because I'm just a normal, everyday person.
But no, that would only be if you were doing a subdivision.
She's in a subdivision.
Unexisting subdivision.
He's saying no, it doesn't.
No, like if, if you were subdividing your property, then, then it would have to get sent to the city.
Even though it's not, let's say I'm creating a subdivision though, even though I'm not within the current city limits.
The city or the county planner would have to send it to the city for the city's comments inside the one mile buffer.
Does the county have to approve this one mile buffer?
The, well, that's where part of the, the statute in with the growth policy about coordination with the county is so key. Because we do, we do need to have this, this, these discussions with the county and it's good that Commissioner Bullock is there right now to also kinda give some input. So, uh, so it's kinda checking two different boxes, really.
So do we have to have the county approval of this one mile buffer?
They should, I mean, they should give their public input. This is a public process. So, uh. They can give comments, but ultimately it's, it is the city's growth policy, but there is coordination that needs to be done. So I would recommend trying to keep it, keep it civil and take everybody's comments.
Right.
Let me ask you this.
You don't live in County County.
Is there any documentation now that has designated the one mile buffer? Or is that just an opinion? Jeff?
I, I looked through the county growth policy this morning. And there's specifically talks about a one mile buffer. Under, uh, goals and objectives, and there's a section called cooper, cooperation with other governments. And the objective of that is, says coordinate, coordinate the. Um, coordination of subdivisions and development. Permit applications within one mile of incorporated community, communities' boundaries or in. In any cases where municipals services are being requested.
So that's in the county growth policy, but it's not in ours.
I.
I couldn't find it in ours.
Yeah, we used to have some wording in there, but I, I'm not sure if it, yeah, I couldn't say it's there anymore.
Well, there's two questions here, uh, Kevin. Um, and I'm kinda with Marie here, you know, kinda confused a little bit. So if Marie is in a subdivision now that's designated the county and approved by the county. Okay, and she wants to build something, she has to go to the county planning board, correct?
That is correct.
If her subdivision, existing subdivision approved by the county is within this one mile. Buffer zone. Does, the city has input, but they can't deny it?
So when it was subdivided initially is when it should have been sent to the city, but whether or not it was. Is kind of, at this point, is kind of, kind of moot. So it would be.
It's an approved subdivision by the county.
Yes, it would be any further subdivisions or brand new subdivisions would need to get sent on to the city for their comment.
Okay, I get that.
How the power progressively grows then is the new.
I get that, but I, again, I'm confused a little bit. And, and that, and, and Marie's question, she's in an approved subdivision, approved by the county. Existing, and she wants to build something on her property. She gets approval from the county to do that. Does she need approval from the city?
Not for anything building related.
Okay, that's.
Only, only subdivisions, some, only subdivisions. And it's, it's just comment, but we should keep moving on, just to keep it going. I can answer other additional questions afterwards to Marie if you have them.
Let me ask you this before you get going, because I think this, this is critical to this process here. The, as we move forward and we have this meeting with the county. Should we review this one mile buffer and come, maybe it should be a half a mile, maybe it should be three quarters of a mile, maybe. And, and so that we agree to where that line is? Or is it is what it is based on old documentation?
So it's my understanding that one mile buffer comes out of MCA for, uh, subdivisions. So, so that's kinda stuck.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dave, so that was, that was my comment and, and there's a question online that was raised, kind of in the same, uh, in the same thing on this as well. Um, but the one mile, the one mile is statutory. So we don't get to change that to match the contour of the topology. But everything in, within the one mile and, and checking with, um, Greg, doesn't necessarily have to be allocated. So like when Jeff was talking about changing something to follow the contour. It would be the use cases within that one mile, cuz the one mile is set. We don't get to, we don't get to tweak that. If we change, here's the use case and maybe residential is only gonna be on the valley floor and then outside of that. Maybe it's not even zoned, maybe we don't have plans for that area.
Okay.
And so, and then kind of within that, where does it tie, going back to Marie's question? Is if somebody wants to create a new subdivision, so here's some spot, let's, let's take the spot that's south of town. Uh, Wolf, that, is that, that has a bunch of property there. So there's a bunch of property there that's not within the city limit. If they wanted to go create a new subdivision. Subdivide it all out and, and, and do a new subdivision, if it's within that one mile. Then the county would submit it to the city for comment. We have no authority, we don't have the ability to approve or reject it. The county gives it to us for com, for comment. In the RACI matrix, we are an input. And basically they said, we've heard what the city's objections are, we're gonna go ahead and do it anyway. Or they say, ah, thanks, it's a good thing we knew that, maybe we'll factor that into how we do it, because someday when you grow, that's the likely spot. So, so within that one mile, it's just, that's close enough that MCA says we have to talk to each other. And they can say, thank you, we've heard your opinion and move on. But that's the creation of a subdivision, not an individual property owner doing that. Um, Kevin, is there anything I said there that I misstated?
No, no, he actually did a lot better explaining the, I just kept saying comment. I should've gone into more detail about the comment part. It's, it's exactly, it's the exact same as if somebody from the public, the board. The board, whoever's reviewing it, needs to find like an actual legal reason to deny anything. So. That's where, like, even if the city was just said, no, we don't like it. Exactly like Mayor Westwood said, the county could just say, we don't care, we're still gonna do it. So, does that kinda, does that help a little bit more?
There, there's nothing to overwrite, we're just an input, like public comment.
Yes, yep. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Westwood, appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that makes it pretty clear.
It does, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Again, going back to the. That's a long explanation.
Yeah.
They have that explanation with every individual party affected in any part of the zone. It's a lot of talking.
Yeah.
And that's where.
We need to clarify that.
The disconnect comes from the, if you have to say too much, then it's a challenge, it's gonna be hard. And again, the perception of what you have to deal with is. The map is, and then the five minute conversation and explanation of what it means, that's a lot.
Yeah.
It's, I, that's outside looking in.
But what would happen is if somebody came to the county and wanted to create a subdivision, the first thing you'd do is you'd send them to the planner.
Yep.
And the planner would say, great, you're creating a subdivision within a mile of Red Lodge, that means we have to submit it to them for input. Only input.
Yeah.
Period, end of comment. And that's the planner's job to do that.
Agreed. Uh, don't miss, disagree with that, and the perception of. Alright, but we were told to come to you, you're the planner, are we dealing with you or where are we dealing with? And again, it's in. I understand the public comment and that's totally, I totally agree with that. But the perception is, we gotta go to you, why are we going to the city?
It's called a cooperative zone. Kevin, I know we've distracted a little bit, but I think that this clarification within this one mile that we just heard. Is gonna make the rest of the process a hell of a lot easier. And I would suggest. That somehow we reduce that to writing associated with this map. So that anybody who sees this map understands the implications of that zone. Uh, within the dotted, red dotted red line.
Yeah, I'll talk to Jeremy about that and we'll get something all drafted up to put on there, maybe a disclaimer of some sort, but. Something to try to make it clear. I agree, that was way too long of an explanation, so.
Well, but I, I think we needed it and I think it's gonna make the rest of the discussion a lot easier. Um, going back to Jeff's comment and, and Sandy's comment about the, the, the. The dotted line here is, is statutory, but to Jeff's comment. This imaginary line of moving a little, a little bit west. And, and, and taking the blue up into the upper corner there, we have low density, taking the blue up and then moving it slightly. To the west over the red line, would that accomplish what you're after, Jeff?
Yeah, probably. I guess when I, when I, the way I was looking at that is that sliver. That's between the valley bottom and the red dash line, it looks like it's all pretty much agriculture. There's no housing there at all.
You see what we're saying? Um, Kevin, take, take the blue and move it all the way to the north.
Like right in here? Or the whole thing?
Take, take, no, and then within, within the red line, just the.
Right where my cursor's at.
Right-handed third or the right-handed quarter, where you have your, I think your cursor there, make that blue.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That does.
It's just that there's all these homes along the, uh, east side of Two Mile Bridge Road. They're not ag, they're not raising crops. They might have a horse, is it like twenty acres like?
Yeah, but I would include those in, in the green.
I would definitely include those in the green. If you wanna go all the way up to East Bench Road, which is move the red line. You know, further to the east, that definitely is low density. Those are ag lots.
Okay, so you wouldn't have the open space blue all the way to the top then?
No.
Okay, so you'd leave the green where it is?
Yeah, I mean, you can already see that it's already been subdivided into twenties.
Okay, so your, your thought is leave the green as is?
I would leave the green as is.
And, and Jeff dotted line there, you're, you're saying you don't agree with that, moving that dotted line?
I, I think the dotted line should stay, um, to the east of those properties that are on the east side of Two Mile Bridge Road.
So right where it is?
Yeah.
Teresa?
Oh, we're just gonna do the one mile buffer those, cuz it's.
But the one mile buffer is statutory.
Right, so she's saying to move it though.
No, we're not saying, well, we're saying leave it.
Okay, well, the red dotted line, that's different from the green area that we're talking about.
Right.
So I, there are many other instances on this map where there's already something developed. For instance, commercial instead of ag or, you know.
Yeah, but right now, I'm just talking about this corner.
So, but yeah, but, but the idea here of changing is because there's something already there that isn't what we're proposing. So where do you draw that line? I don't know, but there is an awful lot of development up there already. And it's not always.
So are you saying leave the green where it is?
I'm saying, I think there should be something, I don't know, outward that shows that it's still open space ag, but.
Outward from where?
Maybe from the red dash line.
Does, so this has to be, basically what you've done here besides the one mile buffer. You've actually said this is low density, this is open space, and that has to be on the map as well?
Not necessarily. This could be whatever you guys want it theoretically to look like. So like Sammy, you brought up that down, I think down here you said are duplexes? So that could be a, a potential for medium density. Depending on what, what you guys think.
Question is, can we just say residential and leave it?
I would much prefer that it just.
Say residential, not low, not high, residential. Can we be that generic? That we just call it residential?
I think we could. It's your map, so I think we, I think we could call it that.
That way you avoid people perceiving that, oh, you're trying to zone us. And you're, and you're making it high density, and I think, don't want that.
I think the one thing to keep in mind would, I think in the reason Jeremy did low and high was. For cases around the spires, like changing it to R four, that the density was a concern. So since annexation, this is what we review it against. Um, if you change it to residential, then someone can make the argument of throwing in a high density. Right next to ag space, but just something to consider is calling it residential can mean.
But that gives us options, it could be low or high.
Yep.
And we make that decision, do we not, when we zone?
Well, the county does.
Or the county does.
Yeah, unless they were petitioning to annex, then the city makes the decision.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, Greg, but glad you brought that up, yeah. There is a pretty big implication in theory on city services, so. It's a very good point.
Okay, so where are we? Are, are we on this upper northeast corner here?
Yep, and it's, it sounds like we're still sticking with low density residential.
Yeah.
In here, and then I'm not sure about down closer to the city, do we wanna consider a different? Density or do we wanna keep this all as low, low density?
I don't know, Jeff, what do you think?
Okay, what is that subdivision there?
Woodlands on Rock Creek.
Woodlands on Rock Creek, that's kind of like medium density, really.
Yeah, half of it are duplexes, the other half are single family homes.
And so that, to me, that's a situ, and that's. Got a higher probability of potentially being annexed at some point.
Yeah.
So maybe in that case, we, we do try to fit what the existing land use is a little bit more. A little bit more specifically. In that case, maybe medium density or medium, medium to high density or something along those lines.
I mean, we've got.
As opposed to the others, the other parcels there that are more of what, maybe five to twenty acres in size?
Single family.
And I guess with my way of thinking, that's, you're talking about more like rules, rural residential. Not, not urban residential.
Yeah, yeah, so I think woodland should be taken. Yeah. Yeah. So I think woodlands should be taken out of the low density and put in medium density.
You see, you know where Woodlands is, Kevin, that she's talking about? It's in the southwest corner of the green.
Right. Is my cursor on it right there?
About, that's about right, right there.
Okay.
And, and they're suggesting that that be colored your medium density, which is kind of a light pink or orange, I think.
All right. Do just, just south of that where we got this little jog right here, to me, looks like it's all floodplain. Do we, would that be a good candidate to, to kind of square it off as open space? Almost right at the bottom of the subdivision?
You're talking about the, the V that goes down? Yeah, there are actually, there are actually, those two parcels were put together and there are two homes on it. So, um, but it is part of Woodlands. So all of that, all of that right up to the road. And then you can see all the little half acre parcels.
Okay.
Can, can you, can you make that change? So we can see what it looks, not on this map, but make a note for the next version.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely can. So I was thinking we could cut it off maybe like right at the, the road into uh, Woodlands. Does that look like kind of a right area? Change that to, to a medium density, leave this low density.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. And then everything else, yeah, on there looks fine, right? Up here in this, on this side, on the, uh, the east side of the creek looks good.
Yeah. I still, okay. Susan, you have any thoughts on this?
I'm having trouble following the pointer.
Yeah. Can you get a bigger pointer?
Actually, you can. Go change your mouse settings and choose a bigger cursor.
Yeah, yeah, definitely can. Hold on one second.
Thank you.
Marie?
What?
Are you getting okay now?
I'm getting, uh, yeah, everything's fine.
Okay.
You're going to stop sharing for one second because
Teresa? This is only one corner here, but I think it's a good start.
We're getting there.
Okay. Jeff? Or Bill?
I, I just practicality question, does the review go both ways? So if there's
I'm sorry?
Does the review or consent or input, public comment, whatever?
Yeah.
Does it go both ways? So if there's something butted up on the city side that's being contemplated, does that the county planning board or the county
Yeah. And that's part of this joint meeting that we're
Oh, that's a great question.
Talking about, okay.
The other question is like Woodlands is in the county, but they have city sewer. Okay. So when they, when that subdivision was approved by the county, it's my understanding that they've already agreed that if the city chooses to annex them, that we can do it at will. Same with, uh, same with Grandview, Grandview South.
I just knew that's written down. I don't know.
Yeah. And I don't know. It may be, I've been told that it's in the annexation agreement, that it's in the subdivision agreement.
I, I'd have to see it. I don't know.
Okay. And, and, and again, I can't reiterate this enough. This is just conversation here.
Yeah.
And we'll come up with a map and then hopefully the two planners will look at it. And then I'm sure they'll make some exchange and then we'll look at it again before we come. It's probably going to get three or four different looks before we come up with it.
So is your question then, it, since the, all of the city is within the county, is your question that it would be prudent then or that the county gets to give comment on whatever the city approves? Is that what you're saying?
It is. And again, not so much for that, but again, going back to all the things that, so if there's a, in whatever area in a residence that's already there, somewhere in this area that's going to be proposed, a higher density or something more elevated going next to, first on the other side of the line, they get to say, hey, wait, no, or whatever the case may be for input, if that's how it works on the other side.
I think that's a fair question and, and I think that's a discussion that two planners should have and come back with a thought personally.
Yep.
To me, I think
I would, I would interject that, that there is wording to, to that extent in the current county growth policy. That there's basically a two-way communication between municipalities and the counties. So to my way of thinking, yeah, it definitely should be conversations from the city to the county and from the county back to the city on anything that's involved within this one mile.
Yeah. And apparently those conversations haven't happened, but hopefully they will from starting going forward. Okay. All right, Kevin. There you go. You got to see that Susan can see.
Did everybody, everybody see it now? Okay. All right. Uh, so we'll move over here to the west, someone that's red. This would be the high, high density is what, how Jeremy put this one. What are we, what are we thinking about that? Looks like we already got some existing, maybe higher density right here. So it could potentially be compatible. Any, any comments on that one?
Yeah. Well, you've also got some commercial, I believe, in there along Highway 78 where you see the subdivision go down to 78. There's a subdivision that the Draper subdivision that the county approved. Yeah, just a little bit lower.
In here?
Yeah, that's a subdivision the county approved, and I believe it was approved for commercial.
Okay. Do, was that pretty recent? Cause some of this stuff might be lagging just because we haven't, uh, like the aerials haven't been updated to show the, the new lot lines or anything like that. So, uh,
It was last winter we approved.
Last winter, last winter that subdivision was approved. But it's on the map anyway.
Yeah, those, those dirt roads are showing up.
Okay. And what's the name of that subdivision? Cause we'll get, we can get that changed to commercial.
Seven D.
Well, we don't Seven B?
D, David.
Seven Delta. So
Put your cursor on what seven delta is. Is that this right here?
That right in here, this one?
No, higher. See, see the little grid? There you go. Your finger's out there.
Okay, okay. I thought it was below. That makes sense. Okay. So that one, seven delta changed to?
That's be changed to what?
Commercial.
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 Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is what I was commenting on earlier. You already have subdivisions that have been developed apart from the way they're showing on here. Does that mean the way, does that mean because it's already done, we want it to continue to, to, to be zoned commercial? If it's right up against, is this one of those friction areas where it's right across from a, a residential, a dense residential area? Do we want that to all be commercial? Or do we want some other?
County at the end of the day, right?
We, we have no say.
I'm asking you a question. Doesn't matter who it belongs to, if it's in this cooperation zone, right? So wouldn't we cooperate to say, hey, this is impacting residences, our residential development? Let's work on, is this light industry? Is it commercial? What is it, right? So do we just like it, say, oh, there's already something there that's commercial. Let's say it's all commercial.
It's already been approved. We don't have any
You're talking about a certain
This little tiny, this one.
Right, right. I'm talking about the whole big red area, which is what we're talking about.
No, we're only talking about this one little section.
Okay. So if you, you're gonna, you're gonna cut that out and say it's commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the rest will, the rest will stay
I don't know what anybody wants to say, you know, what, what do we, this is for our growth policy, right? How do we want to grow together with the county? Just willy-nilly, fall over the board? Or do we want to have, what'd you call it? A cooperative effort in forming something that makes sense?
Well, we're trying to make it a cooperative effort.
Exactly.
But to the point is that seven D is already commercial, so we ought to, we ought to color it. So
That, that, yeah.
And then the rest, which stay the same. Is that right, Kevin? To the north of seven?
It doesn't necessarily have to. I mean, typ- typically, in a lot of the cases, you will see more commercial development along like highway corridors. So if that's where the city said potentially down the road, they would like to see more commercial run out there, then you guys could decide and, and change it to show that maybe a future land use map would be commercial. But typically also you'll see high res, high density residential usually acts as a buffer between those, uh, more incompatible uses like commercial and low density. Uh, so that's where, that's kind of how the discussion needs, needs to go. So what, so do we want to leave it as high, high density residential? Or would the city like to see it potentially go commercial? Who knows?
That's farmland.
Marie, Marie has a question. Go ahead, Marie.
Like active farm, the, the Draper is active ranch farmland. So would that go under commercial, the commercial umbrella anyway? Since it's being used for production?
Add one of their colors?
Or open ag space?
Or should we change, yeah, well, it's open ag space now.
This is the one they have right now.
So does it stay?
It could be, it could be open ag. I mean, if, if you guys, so you know the, the community better than I do. So if you know that that might potentially always stay as open ag land and you think that it's not going to change, then we could change it to, to that. So but you guys, yeah, you guys kind of have to discuss that amongst yourselves.
Everything behind that commercial subdivision on, on Draper's land is open ag. So if you want to keep it as commercial, I mean, I, I see how it's under that umbrella. But if you want to diversify ag from the commercial, but right now it's, it's active, um, farm.
So you're thinking it should be open space ag?
That's what it is today, except for the cutout where it's commercial.
The area where you have your, your cursor right now, is that currently open space ag?
Yeah.
So you bring the blue down and then put this to commercial?
Yeah.
That would be best. Now, then if you go to, um, the red that's to the right, to the east, go up, up that piece there is also, uh, open ag space currently.
Yeah.
And, and no, no plan to ever change that from open ag space? You don't think? Or I know it's hard to tell fifty years now, but
Yeah, we never know what's going to happen in the future, but
So the question is, what would, what would the city and the
Let me ask you this, just so I'm clear. If, if, if we designate in this land use open ag, we can change our mind down, down, down the road and, and zone it or, or annex it accordingly, could we not?
Just know that it will
This map doesn't lock us into that particular land use. It's just a suggested land use at this point.
Yeah, it does get a little bit more difficult when this is your guiding document though for reviewing annexations. So usually when you're reviewing an annexation or any sort of conditional use permit, you got to make sure that it fits all the criteria within the, the growth policy. So that's why we're, you kind of want to set it up in a way that you think you'd like to see it. The city would like to see it potentially. So then it makes it easier to justify an annexation.
Well, okay, let's just use Draper's as an example again. And that other piece that you got the pointer on, I think that's still Jack Prather's, but I might be wrong. But that's what, anyway. On Draper's behind the commercial, I can see them keeping that as their open ag because the boys are taking over. But on the other side of 78, which they also own, which is across the, the way if you, if you right there, yep, that's for sale and they want to stop there, they've had that for sale. And that, so that has more of a potential to someday be like a subdivision or, or
High density.
High density, um, where the other side of the road, I think they want, so what do you do? Are you, is it, is there any sort of update where every five years that, because the status quo is always going to change?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's re, uh, reviewing the growth policy every five years is when, that's what everybody should do. A lot of communities don't.
The thing that I'm at is I've been by this place 10 times a day and I know them personally and they're friends of mine. And you know, but how would you, I mean, how can you plan when you don't know that, you know, the people involved?
Dave? I, I have a question and I think I gathered this from listening to Jeremy. Can, Kevin, can I have you zoom out for just a little bit so you can see the whole one mile area? So let's reduce this to a board game, just for the discussion. You need to put 500 new doorstops around Red Lodge in the next 10 years. So you have some little houses, you have some big houses, you have some low density housing, you have some medium density housing, you have some high density housing. All this is, is, uh, hmm, if I were going to put those, if I have to look into the future and kind of say, where within that red circle would I put high density housing? And I heard Kevin say earlier that it's common to put high density housing between commercial zones and lower density housing. So if that makes sense, is there someplace in that map where I'd say, this is where I plot down the high density housing? Where do I plot down? But, but just look at that square and say, I need to put 500 new doorsteps in there. Now, that's not going to happen tomorrow. But if I had to put 500 new doorsteps within that red square, where would it make the most sense based on what's out there right now? Is that, Kevin, is that a fair way to approach this exercise?
I think it's a great assessment. And then I think just looking, especially it's easier when we're closer to the city, but looking at what's already there on the landscape also helps. So it's like, you're looking at an area over here where maybe it clearly is a higher density subdivision. The land use type, we'd have to figure out, but, but then it just, it makes more sense compatibility wise to go higher density, right? When you're adjacent to something like that. So even if it is somebody's property who they might, they might never subdivide it. For the sake of this, we do have to give it a designation. But then in five years, when we re-review this document, things could change greatly. So that's where every five years the map will change in that regard. So I think, Mayor Westwood, I think you're right. I think that's a great assessment. Like it is, think of it kind of like a game.
Roughly.
Okay.
Hotel, little girl.
So based on where we are right now, and looking at this area, move your cursor up, 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 right there. We've been talking about that area right there. The only change that I've made it a note on is on seven B.
D.
And everything else is staying, uh, medium to high density. And we're not moving the blue down. Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, I believe we discussed moving the blue down to fill this parcel around the commercial.
Yeah.
Does that kind of, I think that was another change.
Do we agree with that? Susan? Yeah?
I think, I think that makes sense is in terms of just thinking about what's the, no, right now it's currently ag primarily, except for that cutout for commercial. Um, it's likely to remain ag. Um, and then I'm thinking in terms of extending city services
Yeah.
to those adjacent parcels. What's the probability, the likelihood of, of that happening? So right now, I guess I agree with
I'm, I'm just trying to do this. Teresa?
I agree with you on high density. It's, it, it just makes sense that you would extend the, um, housing up there. I mean, their prime views of the
North of the commercial.
Accessible, yeah.
So you're saying leave it as it is?
Yeah.
Um, Sandy?
I, I'm probably okay with all the property to the north of 78. But those properties along 78 on the west that are currently ag land, um, I don't want to see high density along Highway 78, frankly. If, if I had my choice for that land, there would be low density residential in there.
I think it would end up being actually medium density, which is what my subdivision is classified as. We're all like about two and a half, three acres. And I think that's what it would end up being because that's really pretty much the trend out there as far as the subdivision's going out that way. But if, if they sell that land, which has been for sale, I mean, I don't think you want to register it as, it's ag now, but I don't want to get rid of it.
Yeah, I don't want it to be, I would say medium density. I don't think it would be like the golf course. Like people would want the two and a half, three acres.
Okay.
So if I may
Yeah.
to maybe address Sandy's point, so it's already going to be low density housing. There's a 180 or 360 in there. It's already being contemplated for subdivision.
Okay.
It's already what now?
Being
Lower, high.
Subdivided, subdivided.
Okay. And the low density or medium density?
There're going to be some houses there. I don't know.
Okay. So I'm hearing more people interested in, and I'm talking about that block right north of seven B.
Go down, down, down there.
Right.
Down, that's what you're talking about, yeah?
No, I'm talking about the one north of that. That one right there.
Yeah.
Is that medium density or is that, um,
High.
Open space ag?
Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Bill, is that the one you were talking about?
No, the first one to the left where it's blue right now, open space ag, that's not going to be over.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to do this one block at a time here. Okay? That block right there that the arrow's on, what should it be?
I assume
Residential of some sort.
So medium density.
Well, it's surrounding Well, it's surrounding commercial land. It's one, one big parcel that they've cut out a little piece.
Okay.
So I would imagine that if you have commercial, that around that would be higher density. Does that make sense?
It wouldn't be a residential.
Exactly.
I get it.
All right, do we agree it should be residential, right?
Yes.
Do we agree it should be residential?
High density residential.
Yeah.
Just that one parcel.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know. I, you know, I'm just thinking in terms of... How you, how are you gonna, what's the logical way in terms of extending city services? I mean, it isn't just, it isn't just about whether it's gonna be high hu- housing and density. It's how are you gonna extend and pay for extension of sewer, extension of water system, extension of, of a trans- transportation system? And so I guess when I see that much open space, what's the likelihood in the next five years that that's, those areas are gonna be subdiva- subdivided versus just staying as ag and open space?
Well, we're all well out there anyway. Like I, I, I see zero chance.
I, I agree. There's zero chance. I mean, you know, that, obviously any of this, any of annexing any part of this one mile thing is gonna put a strain on both our sewer and our water. But I guess we have to do this regardless of the strain on water and sewer.
Well, I would, I would look at it, what's, what's the probability of that being annexed versus Remington Ranch and Grandview?
Well, those I can see.
Those, those, that's where existing development is. That's where, you know, some of, and, you know, it's already being served by city sewer. What's, what's the probability and likelihood of, of those areas being annexed in in the next five years versus just blanket open space?
I, I, I'm...
So that's kind of the way.
Okay.
To me, it's, it's a little bit more complex than just drawing circles on a map and, and thinking about land use. What's, what's the existing infrastructure and the likelihood of being able to extend that infrastructure into the, those areas adjacent to the city boundary? That's, to me, that, approaching it from that standpoint makes it a little bit, for me, easier.
If I may though, the city does already have an annexation policy. So all that should be taken into consideration as a, a petition to annexation, annex comes in. So for the purpose of doing this future land use map, yes, it is good to, to keep that in mind. But we do, since we do have to, have to do it, we do need to make some decisions. Uh, so just know that that's already, already taken care of in a different process.
All right. Uh, John, you've been kind of quiet here. Do you have an opinion on this? Can you break the, break the tie?
Yeah. I'm with Jeff, to be honest. I mean, it's, how you look at this is gonna be from a city, you know, resource perspective more than anything.
Okay. Trying to move this along. What if we just take that area north of seven B and make it open space, period?
I agree.
Where you have your hand. So that area right there and to the right.
And to the right, these ones? All of them or just...
Yeah, and, and move your cursor to the left a little bit.
It's all fine.
Make that all open space.
There are a couple things in the long Willow Creek.
Down, down to the top of the seven B.
True Hill, True, True Hill.
Are we getting to a con- where we can agree to that?
I'm okay with that.
Open space? Sandy?
Uh, that's fine. What's the worst that can happen?
Marie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Whatever, Jeff.
Yeah. Okay. You see what we did there? It, it's, it's...
Yep. Open space and then open space up here. Do we want to move...
Space there and open space on that vertical piece down to seventy.
Yep.
Lower case R.
Right there.
Do we, did every single one of these pieces right in here want to go to open space? Or do we...
That's what I, that's what I'm suggesting at this point, because that gives us flexibility in the future.
Okay.
And then what if the one that's lower?
Well, I'll get to that one as soon as I get this one done.
Sure, good one.
Okay? Okay?
All right. Let me make one note real quick.
We're really moving along. I think I'm making progress.
All right.
All right. The next one we want to talk about is the one that's just south of seven B. Is that right, Sandy?
Correct.
And right now you've got that marked high density residential.
And that's open space?
And you, and Sandy thinks that should be open space. It's on the south side of seventy-eight.
These ones right in here.
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, that little wedge there that's just north of your cursor, should seventy-eight be the boundary?
Yeah.
And so that vertical rectangular space there, Sandy's suggestion, open space there as well.
A little bit of that is state.
I'm sorry?
State, the state's workshop. Anyway.
Teresa, what do you think of that?
You're talking about the section on the left.
That where he's got his cursor.
Right there.
Yeah.
It, it is adjacent to the city and some higher density stuff going on right here though.
There is?
That's in, inside the city actually. So that, that is compatible with what is in there right now.
But in the next five years, it's very, very unlikely that that's gonna be high density.
Let me ask you this question, Kevin, because when we mark something open space, is that the one designation that gives us the most flexibility?
I, I would say, I would say it probably would, but you don't want to just go crazy putting everything open space.
Now, why would, why not?
It's...
I, I go, I go back to, from, from the administration side, as we're looking at, how do we want to look at planning services? Where if we're gonna need to expand our sewer, we need to expand our water, we need to... I want to have an idea of where you think those five hundred doorstops are gonna go. That way I can use that information as I say, that's kind of an area we've looked at for this. And so to me, when you say, is that the most, is that the least restrictive? I think it, it's the least useful for planning purposes.
Yeah, but what I'm thinking is when we get a, a diversity of opinions on this planning board of what it should be, that's when I'm headed for open space.
Okay?
If we can agree on this planning board that that block is designated properly as high density residential, I'm fine with that.
It looks like an extension of, you know, the housing, Grandview and, and, you know, south of that and across the way of the upper Cotton Hills.
Would you agree that it should include that little wedge south of seventy-eight?
That little wedge is the county's...
What?
That little tiny wedge is where the county keeps all their stuff.
No, that's the state, that's, that's state.
Oh, state.
That, that, that...
That's actually state.
That's their, their, their shop where they keep the big plows.
So we gotta keep that under the seven B commercial then?
That, that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, you have a staff input?
Yeah, Greg?
So I guess from Great West's perspective, and I know Chad's mentioned it before. Um, so when we write grants to improve, you know, your wastewater lagoons or up on the bench, you know, you're talking about how services can't be extended there. Like we point to the growth policy as like Red Lodge has identified this as a development area and we don't, we don't have the infrastructure for it. So then the engineer can apply for a grant saying this has been identified. So something else to keep in mind.
So you're not gonna let it make it easy, let us do it all open space?
I mean, it's, it's your guys' growth policy that I...
I, I'm, I'm just kind of being a little bit facetious here.
But if we wanted to change it, just like anything we change in the growth policy, we suggest a change. It goes to city council, city council approves or disapproves. So this doesn't have to be written in blood.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's just if, you know, Great West identifies a grant opportunity, like the president signed the big infrastructure bill, for example. You know, you might not have time to update it for the application, but...
Let me, let me just take a poll here. Right now it's designated, that rectangular that he has, oops, he moved the cursor. Move it down.
Sorry.
Move it down a little bit more.
That big rectangle right there.
A little bit more.
Right in...
Down. That right there. Right now that's high density residential. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
No? What do you want it to be?
I want it to be open space.
Marie?
Ag.
Huh?
Open space, open, blue. I want blue.
Greg?
Jeff? On this case, Marie said that that, that parcel's for sale. The likelihood that that's gonna be subdivided is probably a higher priority. It's adjacent to high, to residential area in the golf course. So in this case, I would say the likelihood of that parcel be needing to have city services is probably fairly high probability if it is sold and goes to subdivision. So in that case, I would identify that as an area where we need, the city and county needs to think about how are they gonna supply services to that parcel?
That's a good point. I, how about we, how about medium density?
Medium density is what, oh, it's high density now.
I, I would...
It's like medium.
Density now.
All right, Susan?
Medium sounds good to me.
John?
I think it's medium because of also the surrounding parcels.
Okay, I'm hearing that where you have your hand to be changed from high density to medium density. Kevin?
He's laughing. He's laughing at us. Probably not the first time today. We just made sense.
Okay?
Yep, got it? Do we want to...
All right, now, I'm just gonna move to that long space there, uh, just to the left of that. Um, on the, uh, just east of the red line, you've got it marked as medium density.
That's me.
Okay.
North of seventy-eight is...
Yeah.
South of seventy-eight is...
Just this, this whole, if you look at my cursor, just this whole strip is what we're looking at.
Is that all medium density or just south of seven?
That is all medium density on both sides.
Okay. Jeff?
It should be...
Oh, wait a minute. Bill, go ahead.
Is there less than, is there low density? Because it's already gonna be...
I'm sorry?
Is there low density or, I mean, it's already, something's already gonna happen. There will be houses there within a year.
Within a year? You think medium density? He's the, what's his name? He's building the...
But, yeah, less than five acre parcels?
Would you say like three acres-ish is what you're...
No, it's probably gonna be more than that, five to ten, I would say.
So you, you don't think medium density is correct for that?
I don't.
What do you think it should be?
Low density. I mean, if that's, if that's an option, I mean, it, it's gonna happen.
Low density for that whole thing, now?
Yep. Yep. We do have a low density option.
Okay. Hang on one at a time here because you're confusing me. So medium or, or...
For just south of seventy-eight?
Yeah.
Me, low is fine, yeah.
Low?
Low, low, low.
Susan? John?
Low.
Okay, so what I'm hearing there is south of seventy-eight is low density in that block. Kevin?
Okay.
What about north of seventy-eight?
Leave it medium, medium is already down there, right?
Yeah.
What I'm hearing is leave the north of seventy-eight medium density.
Got it. So low to the south and leave it alone to the north?
Right.
All right. Perfect.
All right.
So would it be helpful to kind of have a definition of what we mean by low, medium and high?
Yeah.
So...
It's in there, right?
It's just low density, five acres and greater. Medium density is, is one acre to five acres and, and high density is anything less than one acre. I mean, I'm just try, just trying to get how, get a mental picture.
Is there a standard definition for low, medium and high?
I think that's what Jeff just said is pretty close. I think that's about what I would go off of. Because typically you're gonna see higher density in, in the city with like seventy-five hundred square foot and lower. Uh, and then also just thinking in terms of, uh, higher density living is like apartments and whatnot too. But that's kind of getting out there. I'm not sure how many major apartments are gonna be put on. But I would, I, I'd agree with Jeff.
Okay, so... Low density in our document is R1. That's what we call it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's kind of what we're talking about is what's future R1, what's future R2, what's future, whatever.
On this map, we need to have in the index a definition for low, medium and high.
Just use the R though. You just take it right out of the zoning...
Well...
Take it out of our zoning document, whatever that definition is.
So that was one thing that Jeremy and I had gone back and forth with and we kind of agreed. We almost don't want any references to zoning at all on this map for that very reason of the discussion that we had earlier, uh, to make sure that people in the county do not come in thinking that they're getting zoned. We don't want anybody to, to perceive it that way. So that was our...
That makes, that makes sense, but you can just say low and just say it's the same definition as R1 without, without mentioning R1, can you not?
We can, we definitely can, but we didn't want to put any reference to any actual Red Lodge zoning districts.
It's coincidence that they're the same.
Well, we'll just keep, we'll make it pretty general, but I'll talk to Jeremy about that. We can get it, we can get that done.
All right, thank you. Good comment, Jeff. You, you got more?
Well, I, I was, yeah, I hesitate, I, I mean, I see the point about some consistency with, with what we call R1 in, in this, within our city. But I'm wondering if those definitions are a little bit more constrained than what I was talking about. When I, when I think of development out in the county, it's, it's more, me, high density is, is like less than one acre. And then, and then you've got the medium in between one to five and then, or, or one to ten or whatever, and then, and then greater than five. And that kind of, at least sets some sideboards in terms of, at, at least for the purposes of future land use. When you get into subdivision, then you start talking about what the individual size of parcels are gonna be, but...
Right.
So I, I guess I was just thinking, and I'm, I'm okay with the, with looking at our, what our zoning definitions are. Those are generally not...
Kevin, will you come up with a definition for us to look at, please?
Yep, I'll work together with Jeremy and Greg and we'll get something all drawn up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I think we've covered that, that block within the red line. Um, so now let's move to that piece outside the red line and, no, move it up and to the left. More.
You're gonna go outside the...
Outside the red zone.
Oh, outside.
We're not gonna play with...
Are, are we gonna leave that the way it is now or, or are we gonna...
Why do we even want to know?
I, I would say for now, let's focus on the inside of that one mile buffer. That's, that's the important part anyway.
That, that's fine.
Yeah, we went, we went a little far out initially anyway, so, uh, I think we should just keep moving south into, uh, down here into this lower res- lower density residential and start, start talking about these ones in here.
Yeah, okay, so now you're in the, on the southwest side.
Okay, you see where the cemetery is? It's colored white. Go up to the top of the green where your ring is.
Right. I don't, right in there. I don't know why there's my hands drawn, but...
Zoom in.
To the left.
Yeah, zoom in. You can see the white.
Little itty bitty white blank between the two reds.
Go up, keep zooming in.
Hold on. It's getting touchy.
Don't know where.
Right, right in there? Are we looking at the same...
No.
It's right along highway seventy-eight, right along the highway. Just south of that, that one parcel that we just, uh, zoned medium.
There you go.
You're almost on it.
Your, your, your ring finger was on the white spot that's the cemetery.
Go to the right. See the white? Up, up, up.
Right there.
That's the cemetery.
Okay, I understand. My computer's different. I'm, I'm like farther north, but, sorry.
You can see some lots to the left of it. You can see some lots to the left of it. And that's the business park. You can see, uh, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, six parcels there that's a business park. Right to the, uh, east of the cemetery, that first green space, those are all commercial.
You're talking about, let me know, am I right on there?
Down to the light green below where you are.
We're in the green.
Right there.
That is a business park. So Pepsi's in there, the, um, King's Cup is in there. That's a business park. Remington Ranch, I think, business park.
So then we'd want that changed to commercial most likely, right?
Yeah.
And those look like they're pretty, like fairly small parcels, so they're probably not gonna get subdivided further. So I, I think I'd be, I'd be alright with going, going commercial on that if everybody else is, so.
How far west would you put the commercial line, Sandy?
Oh, I would just include those, um, those, you can see a road down the middle, which is Pepsi Drive.
Yeah.
And so I would just include the lots on either side of Pepsi Drive. So it's actually about the same size as the, as the cemetery, a little bit more narrow, but the same length. So from where your cursor is now, go straight up to that line.
That's right. That whole thing.
Yeah, that already is a business, uh, development.
Alright. Does that have, um, a subdivision name by any chance or a business park name? It just makes it a lot easier when we change the map.
Remington Business Park, what's it called?
I thought it was just Pepsi Drive.
Yeah, Pepsi Park is what I've always known it as.
No, it's not. It, it was part of, um, Ron.
Montana Cadastro.
I'd have to look on my computer to see what the, uh, but it's, it's something business park.
Wait two seconds.
And I think it's Remington Business Park, cause it's from Remington Ranch.
Bear Tooth Business Park.
Bear Tooth, there you go. Bear Tooth Business Park.
Awesome. Great, alright, got that noted. We'll get that changed to commercial.
Okay, and so, h- how do we feel about the green then, taking that out and the rest of the green low density residential all through there?
I'm okay with that most of the way down. But I don't wanna include any of Grizzly Peak at all in our one mile buffer.
Again, as in our one mile statutory, we can't adjust that.
Well, we've already got Gibson in the world. And maybe it actually isn't, maybe it's just the wording that is part of.
It looks like the, the east-west red line goes just on the north edge of Grizzly Peak.
Yeah.
Was this buffer created in the GIS?
No, it's a property.
Okay, so it's not little, it's not one for one.
The Grizzly Peak is low, low density residential, is it not?
Yeah, but it's not something we ever wanna get involved with.
Well, okay.
And we also need to remove, um, the county.
So am I hearing any objections to the green as is with the exception that we just made? John?
No, I'm sorry, no.
Teresa?
What, you asked for no objection?
No objections. We made the adjustment for the, um, Bear Tooth, um, and, and leave the rest of the green as is. Andy?
Yeah, although I think that we're, when you go down to the very bottom, the very, uh, southeastern. Oh no, that's where it is. Okay, I was trying to look for West Fork Road. Because this is Pilates right there, on that corner. Oh, it's already highlighted as pink.
I mean, the red line is pretty wide. If we narrowed the red line, Grizzly Peak wouldn't be in.
No, I don't have any problems with the further down.
Okay.
I think that's what this is, yeah.
Okay. Jeff?
Well, my only change would be the, where, um, Remington Ranch and the, what is it, Meadowwood?
Yeah.
Area, the, see where those smaller parcels are?
Right.
Yeah.
To me, that's cut, would be high density if that fit, if those parcels were less than, less than five acres.
They can never be subdivided, part of the CCNRs.
Yeah.
Those can never be sub, further subdivided, and they are about five acre parts.
Yeah, it's medium, I think.
So it's definitely low density. Susan?
High density.
Marie?
I think that's fine. I mean, it's already, it's already there.
Oh man, we're almost done with this. Alright, so now let's look at that, uh, high density block in there that's, you've got, um.
Groundview and groundview west.
What, what are your thoughts about that block? Jeff?
Well, yeah, those are much smaller lots. I would say that's high density.
And Remington Ranch is, I noticed Remington Ranch is part of that. Do we need to change that?
Well, you've got Groundview and Groundview South, and then where he's got Remington Ranch Road.
Okay.
Those are larger parcels.
Okay.
There's always been talk about a hotel going in there or convention center, so.
So you're okay with the high density designation?
I'm okay with the high density.
And does that include that area to the left, immediately to the left? Is that high, density as well?
Well, there, there's half acre and, and three quarter acres, again, they can't be further subdivided.
So where he's got his cursor right now, is that high density or medium density?
It would be high density, wouldn't it? Those are less than five acre lots.
Okay, so no changes there then? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that what I'm hearing? No changes or not?
It's high density now.
Huh?
I'm okay with that.
John, you know, see where we are?
I do. No, no changes.
Jeff?
Yeah, that's, we're changing that to high density.
It is high density.
I think that is medium density right now, as it's colored.
No, but you got an arrow that says high density.
That is pointing towards Remington Ranch, so we're looking at right next to it. I think Sandy said that's Grandview.
This is, I'm gonna be talking about the high density.
That's high density. The one where a zero is, is the medium. Those are half acre and three quarter acre parts.
So we just need to switch those two?
No, those are good.
Oh, they're, okay.
Those are actually good.
So where the, eh, white arrow is, that's changed to medium density?
We didn't change anything.
Okay, you just confused me again.
I don't believe.
They wanna leave this medium and make this, um, high.
That was a lot of words to say yes exactly the way it is.
Okay.
With the exception of the business.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, no changes there, Kevin, for now.
Okie dokie, hold on one sec. Alright, so then we'll just keep moving south. So then we got this little bit of commercial down here, right on the buffer, right on the edge of town, along the highway.
You're right, it's way down.
That little.
You need to move your map up. Right now you're at the airport. Ah, you're talking about the pink down there, yeah.
Yep, right in here. Can everybody see that?
Wait, what, what about this little breakout point there just north of his hand?
That's rodeo. Yeah, he, that's.
That's the rodeo.
He just needs to move his hand down, but I guess his computer doesn't look the same as what we're seeing.
It, it does. It does not. Tell me when to stop.
Down, down.
Cause now it's not on.
If you pointed the pink kidney just inside the red line.
So the interesting thing is, I'm, I'm now scrolled on my screen all the way to the bottom of the map, so I think it's, it's either delayed or. Let me, let me try zooming out and, well. How about now? Can anybody see it now?
All we see is the bottom of your map.
We just see the legend. Isn't there a hockey game?
The legend would have been helpful.
Is it? Uh, Greg, is it moving at all? When I scroll?
We can see the map now.
Okay.
And there's a big pink stripe all along Highway two twelve.
Yes, that's the one, in question.
That's commercial, right?
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Great.
Good. I don't think anybody's gonna have a problem with that as being commercial.
Alright, how many lots we got left?
We've got Ron Wolf's lots.
We, we got the west right here. That's all we got left.
Well, the bulk of them are Ron Wolf's anyway.
Alright, so let's scroll down to the bottom again, Kevin?
Can you? Is it even remotely in the right spot?
No, you gotta, you gotta scroll down a little bit. Up.
The map needs to go up.
Well, as long as you're right there, why, why don't we stay there then? Well, stop.
The next.
Just stop.
The, the next way is to have Greg do it. Greg, you, are you able to share your screen by any chance? Cause this is not working.
Right. What are, what are our thoughts on that green designated area within the red now that's considered low dens- density residential?
Those are twenty acre parcels owned by Ron Wolf. And I, I could see that being subdivided, not, probably not further subdivided, but sold as low residential.
So, you're thinking to keep it green?
I'm thinking to keep that whole strip there green.
As is?
As is.
Teresa?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
John? Eric?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Susan?
I think so.
Okay. Alright, so all we have now left is, is the blue, which is considered open space, which is, that's my backyard and I don't know how anybody's gonna build on that ridge, on that bench, where your cursor is right now.
They actually on the bench and then go over the other side. I think, yeah, nobody, that's never gonna be a contention for us.
So, are you okay with all that being open space as it, as it indicated?
I'm okay with that.
Jeff?
Yeah, I was just thinking about going back to.
No.
I'm, I'm looking at what's the probability.
I'm just teasing you. Go ahead.
You know?
Trying to keep a sense of humor here.
But that, that parcel of green, that's Ron Wolf's, those large parcels that's up on the bench?
Yeah.
What's, what's the likelihood of those changing and be developing into residential property?
Yes. I, I think there's a chance, but I think the probability of that happening.
And my next question is, where are they gonna get the water?
Well, we already know all.
And who's gonna service the infrastructure?
I agree with that all, all.
Completely.
But that's something that we hit later on. But, that's something that we need to discuss.
Yeah.
If in fact he wants to annex in and.
We can't get there.
He can afford to annex.
And we can say, I'm sorry, Ron. No water, no sewer for you.
What, what I'm, what I'm asking is that likely to stay open space and ag in the foreseeable future versus?
It's been for sale for a long time. It's a whole parcel with forty-three twenty acre parcels.
I know the stuff on the valley bottom has been. I'm talking about up on the bench.
Up on the top.
Stage brush.
All of it.
There's a dirt road that goes back in there.
That's why he's subdivided them to start with.
How much does he want?
So the question is, Jeff, you would, you would, that, from the corner there of, of the southeast most corner of the, of the city boundary, that, that line in north, you would color blue?
Yeah, the highway.
To the highway?
Yeah.
Right.
From this piece up.
Yeah, and, and how far south would you go? Put your finger on it. The blue.
Probably right.
Yeah, right there. Yeah. Teresa? Sandy?
I'm fine with that.
Marie?
I say make it all blue.
Okay, you got that, Kevin?
Yep.
That little. South of the road to the, to the corner of the, of the city limits there would be blue. Huh?
Alright, got that down, and I believe we've made it all the way through. Arguably one of the hardest parts of the growth policy.
So, my next question is, can you get us another version of this, uh, by our next meeting?
Yeah, I'll work with, uh, Jeremy, our GIS team and Greg, and we should get it all marked up and changed. Uh, we, we did send out all the other, uh, maps again from, throughout the, uh, growth policy. The only person I've gotten comments from is Teresa, and she has some great comments. We'll get them addressed. Uh, some of them were editing, quite, editing comments and some were comments that actually probably do need to be discussed by the board, so we can collate those for next time as well and take a look at those and then keep going with the, with the contents of the growth policy, but arguably the future land use map and the goals, objectives, and actions are by far the most important items of the growth policy. So we've, we're making pretty good headway.
Okay, Teresa?
I just wanted to ask before we step off the planning map here, um, if it's referenced in the county's growth policy, is there an existing map? Was it created using the county GIS as an actual buffer around the city boundary and/or does it match what we're looking at here? And can they match? It would make sense that they should match.
The answer is I don't know.
I'm with, I'm with Al. I.
But again, I think that's a question that Jeremy and, and, um.
Yeah.
That's a lot to consume.
Yeah.
That's just a lot to consume.
My guess is, I know Jeremy's working on the GIS. There, I would say that the reason the county hasn't and we don't is because that is a relatively new statutory requirement and they've updated theirs since we've updated ours. So they got theirs done before we got ours done.
And, and I would say that, and prep when Jeremy meets with the county planner, that those are questions that we should prepare him with. Yeah. Did you agree with that?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot to eat here.
Yeah.
So does that mean that when we get the county one and we agree on it, we go through this? So does that mean when the county has their buffer and we have our buffer, we have to adjust ours and go through this again?
No, because I believe I'm understanding this buffer is statutory.
The city boundary buffer, yes.
Yeah. Is that, did I read that correctly?
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Well, if it's something with county, what if it, what if it isn't the same? I mean, no, the city boundary is the city boundary. No, but the county's not gonna say you have to change.
Again, maybe we're anticipating a problem that's not there, but that's a conversation that the two planners need to come up with.
If this isn't, if this is a mile, this over here is more than a mile.
It's literally a function in the GIS, buffer one mile.
Again, I think that's a fair question, but I think we'll hopefully get the two planners together and find out if there is an issue, what the issue is, and then how do we solve it? Okay?
Good.
Alright, next meeting, Kevin?
Yeah, I just gotta make a suggestion of this is, you know, using the GIS tools that we have available.
Yeah.
You know, whatever the buffer boundary is, it's a pretty simple exercise to query the parcel map and basically identify parcels that are zero to five acres, five acres to. Do it, yeah.
Yeah.
What was, what were, what's the definitions?
You said zero to, zero to one.
Zero to one, five.
One to five and greater than five.
And then greater than five, and that would give you an idea what the existing densities are within, within the, within the, within the boundary, and you'd be able to have a little bit better picture in terms of, rather than trying to decipher it on these small scale maps. And that, that would be just a further check against what we discussed tonight in terms of where we were thinking about the likely, likely areas of, um.
So Kevin, did you get that, get the GIS information? You, Jeremy, and Greg kinda figure that out?
Yeah, then I'll be going down to Helena to visit our main office, and that's where our GIS team is out of too, so I can give them a heads up, but they really shouldn't have any problem doing a query like that, just using. they really shouldn't have any problem doing a query like that, just using Kadashal data, so. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be too difficult, but I'll work with them too, with Jeremy and Greg, and we'll get it all figured out.
All right, so, our next meeting's October 9th, and so our next meeting will stay focused on the maps, uh, we'll see your new addition of this map, and, and the maps that I think you're gonna get the most questions on are the parks map, the map on the parks, and I think there might be a map, uh, uh, on the trails, I know there was some questions. And I have reached out to the, um, Parks Board to ask them for, uh, the number of parks they have and the names of the parks, cause I know the existing park map is missing a lot of, uh, dedicated and undedicated parks, and so I, I think there'll be some changes on that map. And there may be a couple other changes, I know you've got the thing, but our next meeting will be focused on the maps, is that correct?
Yep, that sounds good to me, um, I will preface that with, like, our GIS team is using the best available data that, that they have, so it definitely helps a lot when we get input on what is wrong. Another thing that we're gonna change is we're just gonna cut the zoning map that I, that we made, we're just gonna cut that out and just use the cities. And then I think that'll be way, at, be way clearer, so, so don't, so don't necessarily dwell too much on that, because it's gonna, that one's gonna come out, and we'll just work with, with Greg and Jeremy and get the, the cities map and get it inputted.
And, and it might be a little aggressive, I know the next meeting will dedicate to the maps, but at some point, I, I wanna finish the document uh, from Land Use Section forward, um, are you available October 9th?
I, I will be at the planners' conference during the day, I think it ends early, and then I should be coming back to Gray Falls, so I should be able to join by Zoom. Cause I believe it ends, I think it ends at noon, so, I should be all right.
I'm not sure about, I'm not sure about Jeremy yet, but I hope he is.
Yeah, he'll be, he'll be at the conference, but yeah, he should be back and able to join.
So we'll have both you and Jeremy and, and Greg at our October 9th meeting.
And then that'll give me a nice two days at the conference to, to discuss in person with Jeremy and get a lot of this stuff all figured out too, so, I think that'll be nice.
If you could get us a, an updated corrected draft of the work we did tonight, um, at your earliest convenience, that would be helpful.
That I can do.
Okay, anything else on policy? Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Yeah. All right, staff communications?
Uh, nothing upcoming.
So October 9th is just gonna be growth policy and, and maybe an update on master plan, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Any petitions, communications from the audience?
Change your mind, earlier you said you had one you were gonna bring up at the end, you changed your mind.
I think we just beat the hell out of it.
Hey, hey, Bill, I really appreciate you being here for this, to kind of do this, yeah, it, it, it does, it really does.
That's, I, I just, it's, there's gonna be a lot of selling of this just on appearance, and I understand the statutory requirements, but given that, however, to the map as it stands even right now, I mean, there's gonna be some hard room over there, just will be.
Well, hopefully we can communicate and, and you know, like I said, it's not written in stone, if we have to make some changes, it's, it's good for the, both city and the county, we'll do that, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I like how Dave, the mayor articulated it, I, I was, did we tape that?
We did, but I also wrote it in two sentences when Al said he wanted a statement. Um, MCA requires a co, cooperative zone that extends one miles around the existing city boundary, represented by the red dash line when it's right. When, whenever an application for a new subdivision is presented to the county within the cooperative zone, the county will present the subdivision to the city for comment. The city does not have the authority to approve or reject the subdivision application.
So we have that on little three by five cards, so that when people ask us.
I was gonna say, one of those message boards, just to scroll in here.
Well, that's, that, basically, that's gonna be a footnote underneath that map, is what Al said.
And, yeah, as Bill and I, as Bill and I talked this morning, I mean, there's a lot of perceptions, and we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have to work through that, we're gonna have to convince people that we're not the bad guys. And they're not the bad guys, and, and I think we all kind of want the same thing.
Sounds like government to me.
Well, you know, like, you know.
That's what the job is.
There's some history there that none of us had anything to do with, and we're trying to fix it, so, you know.
So what I heard you wanted was some text to go under the map, and that's what I wrote.
Absolutely, you can't write it off on enough, as far as I'm concerned at this point.
So I, I thought we were gonna take the word zoning off of this land use map.
Yes, we are, yeah.
You could even just call it.
I think we did that, just, just to show what was going on within the city.
What does the MCA call it?
Yeah, Montana Code.
We'll, we'll find out, this was just a rough draft.
A roughie rough.
Okay, um, John, you have anything you wanna add to all this mess?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, our next meeting's October 9th, and I will be in the Adirondack Mountains, and so Jeff will chair that meeting, and I will not be able to join, uh, virtually, cause I will be in an automobile.
Well, lucky you.
You know, right?
Enjoy the sights.
Yeah.
The colors, right?
Yeah.
Will you bring me back a chair?
It's all right.
You can get one right down there at Robert's.
I've got plenty, if, you know, if you want me to build you one, that's what I do.
You build Adirondack chairs?
I've built everyone at our house, yeah. For you, 500 bucks a piece.
A bargain at half the price.
Okay, any other business, Jeff? We adjourn.